We all set? I'll call the meeting back to order. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. I'd like to welcome the Finance Committee, members of DPW, other town employees, guests, and those watching on cable this evening.
Finance Director, Town Administrator.
Finance Director, Town Administrator. Who's making the presentation?
So I'll be giving the presentation. You just need a minute to pass out the documentation.
Okay, sure.
Do you need the microphone? Do you want to borrow mine?
You can take mine.
So it is in Dropbox. So who wants a hard copy?
Is it Dropbox?
In the meeting.
So where is it? Tonight's meeting, if she didn't have a copy of the presentation.
Just got put in there. It wasn't there.
Right there.
Been sent.
I was gonna say, it wasn't there a little early.
The presentations.
Oh yeah.
The budget's in there.
That says three minutes ago. It's right.
Please, which one are we, um?
See, it says three minutes. We were looking for that.
Oh, mine says five minutes. Mine's five minutes. They got mine sooner.
You got it faster than me. No. Yeah, you're right. We did.
So we're gonna go to the presentation first?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is not in Dropbox.
Correct. This is the budget.
We had it first. We had the health mitigation and the hazard mitigation first. It's up to you. Do it afterwards. You're ready. We're ready.
Who wants a hard copy?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Anybody else want a hard copy?
Kate, I'm sorry. Do you want a hard copy or are you good with it?
If you have a hard copy, yes, please.
So just trying to figure out who wants one and who doesn't.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm all set. I'm using electronic copy.
Cut off the press, Jeff.
Does Bob want? Bob, are you using electronic copy?
I'm using electronic.
Okay.
Did you make or you want a copy?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
See if I can move it to you. Very like it. Okay, beautiful.
So is this the first time the Finance Committee is seeing this too? Yeah. Yes, okay.
First time, every, this is the first time for everybody.
Okay.
I mean, they've had the budget that was in the budget book that's been in. They've had the opportunity like that to go on to that.
Right, right.
Michael?
You know what?
All set? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're here tonight for the presentation of the Department of Public Works fiscal year 2017 budget request. Before I begin, I'd like to introduce a few individuals. First, standing up and passing out the budgets, the Finance Director of ADO as everyone knows. To my immediate right is Robert Moreland, the Acting Director of Public Works. Julie Spurknight, who is a Building Superintendent. To her right is Mike Sorgen, the Town Engineer. And to his right, Mr. Sorg. So I'll go right to the presentation, and I want to thank the Board and the Finance Committee for their flexibility as we've gone through and made some adjustments to the FY 2017 budget recommendation since the initial recommendation was made in February of this year. Just a couple of notes that I'd like to make. There is an ongoing administrative and criminal investigation. However, some preliminary information has resulted in additional review of the DPW budget, which is the reason for the modifications that are before you this evening. Can everybody hear me? I should know.
No.
No, it's really hard to get in.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm gonna stand. So I'll just say that again. There is an ongoing administrative and criminal investigation. Preliminary information that has come in has resulted in additional review of the DPW budget and the modifications that are being presented this evening and for the public, for anyone else. This is the first review of this documentation that both Boards are proceeding this evening. Just a reminder, obviously, tonight's discussion will be with regard to the budget itself, and I would ask that the discussion remain focused on the budget itself. As we go through this evaluation, one of the factors here is the fact that there certainly is an obligation on my part to make a recommendation to the Board and the Finance Committee, and then ultimately for a budget to be forwarded to Town Meeting. As we're going through this review of the department's operations, the passage of time and further analysis may result in modifications. But this budget proposal reflects the best information that we have available as of today. The evaluation will be ongoing for fiscal year 2017. There could be potential modifications recommended up to and including at Town Meeting. Just a quick overview of the department's administration. The Acting Director, Mr. Moreland, will be with us between the next two and three months. We anticipate advertising the position of Director of Public Works on a permanent basis the week of April 19. Expect that applications will be due May 2nd for full consideration for the position. Also with us again, I introduced Mr. Sorgen. The Water Superintendent, Mark Clark, may join us a little bit later. He had another obligation. If he's attending, will be here. The Building Superintendent this night, obviously, is here as well. And again, as I mentioned, assisting through this budget process, Liz Rourke, the Finance Director. So again, just a note, the budget submitted on February 12th, 2016, has been modified to reflect the ongoing evaluation of manpower and contracted services. FY 2016 authorized personnel, 27 total positions, broken down as follows. One Director, two Superintendents, one for Building, one for Water, one Engineer, two Administrative Assistants, one General Foreman, and 20 DPW, 20 other DPW Union Positions. The one General Foreman is also a Union Position. One of those other 20 is carried in the Enterprise and the Parks and Recreation Budget. Today's staffing, the 21 Union Positions, two were vacant as of February 2016. Eight resigned in March of 2016. One remains out on workers' compensation. Ten are currently working. The FY 2017 staffing recommendation, which is before you in the budget that's been circulated this evening, reflects contractual obligations, particularly any step increases due to employees by virtue of their service to the town. As I've mentioned, the evaluation of the manpower needs will be ongoing over the next several months. All fiscal year 2016 positions remain proposed to be authorized in the budget that's before you at this point. There are four of those positions that are proposed to be filled effective June 1st, 2016, or sooner. Three of them in the Highways and Cemetery Operations and one in Parks. Funding for three General Fund Positions is proposed to be carried in the Salary Pool in the amount of $121,877. Funding for an additional three positions proposed to be carried in the Water Enterprise Salary Contingency, a new line that will be proposed in the Water Budget at the amount of $146,239. There's also a likely reduction in wages that's attributed to the salary, new higher, new higher salary rates that would also be transferred to the Salary Reserve in the amount of approximately $86,000. Just a note to make, as I stated, that's the proposal that we are at this point in time with regards to a recommendation. The evaluation under the oversight of Mr. Moreland and then beyond his service potentially will continue in terms of the staffing and any determination will be made. Any determination for the additional positions to be filled, any of those additional six that are identified, will be made at a labor point in time. Are there any questions with regard to the Table Organization Personnel?
So the 21 positions that you are recommending for this, do we have this presentation or are we gonna see this presentation in our Dropbox?
We'll place it in Dropbox.
I know the budget pages are, but this is, okay, great. So this 27, sorry. Can you move to the next slide?
I'm sorry, yeah.
The 21 positions that are current or, you know, that you have up here. So in FY 2017, you're proposing the same 21?
The Table of Organization would authorize the 21 positions. Six of them would not be funded in the DPW budget. The funding for those positions would be carried in the Salary Pool and Water Salary Contingency. There's no other questions?
We'll cover that, yeah.
I'm all set, yeah.
I'll continue. With regard to overtime, we've reduced the overtime request to reflect the impact of the wage scale for new hires. Just to give a little bit about that, employee may have been at the highest step on a particular wage scale. When we fill up the vacancies, generally at step one. That does result in savings that we have accounted for on a previous slide. Scheduled DPW non-water overtime has been reduced to account for the positions that are being evaluated, which results in the $30,957 that will also be held in the Salary Pool. So that would be in addition to the salaries for the three positions, the regular salaries. And a final note I would make with regard to overtime is that we are looking at, specifically Commissioner, Mr. Moreland is looking at procedures and controls for the authorization of overtime that are in the process of being developed, and some of which may be implemented this next week.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Does that mean that it's $116,957 is being transferred to the Salary Reserve? Is that what I?
No, so.
You're adding them both together.
He would add them together.
The $86,000 plus the $30,000, or $31,000, however you wanna say it. Because he said in addition.
So when you aggregate the savings due to the step schedule and the potential for any hire is made, it would likely be at step one. The savings in the three positions being moved aside and the savings in overtime that we are, I shouldn't say savings, and the reallocation of funding in overtime is totaled to $238,333.85. I cannot stress enough, the proposal is to allocate this funding to the Salary Pool while the ongoing evaluation of staffing needs continues.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
So the water overtime is not changing at all?
That's correct. At this point in time, when we've looked at it, there are items that are water-related. Some of them require regular unscheduled overtime because of regulatory requirements to inspect our water treatment facilities. At this moment, we are not looking to make a reduction in the overtime for water operations. That may, that may change, but at this point in time, we're not making such a prediction.
No, I, I just wanted to fully understand it because you're, you're down individuals on that side as well.
Correct.
But we're not gonna make a reduction.
So if I may, with the Water Enterprise Fund, it's a little different than the General Fund. There's not an avenue, unless we just cut it completely, to hold those funds for the evaluation process of filling those positions. So you'll see that in the Water Enterprise Fund Budget, the three positions that are being, that are authorized but the funding is being held, they have been added to a Salary Contingency line within the Water Enterprise Fund Budget that will only be allowed for salaries for those positions. So the same type of thing would happen with overtime. The Enterprise Fund doesn't have as much leeway as the General Fund does with spending. So the salaries can only be spent on salaries, overtime can only be spent on overtime, and the expense budget can only be spent on expenses. They don't flow to the bottom line. So with the controls that are going to be put in place for overtime, I don't see that it will be an issue.
Here's a follow-up question. That if we wanted to use more outside services, we can't use it from the overtime money?
Not for the Water Enterprise Fund Budget. We would have to.
So isn't that something we wanna consider in our budget?
We may need to do that at October Town Meeting, following the evaluation of the department. We would just, you know, do a budget amendment from the Salary Budget to the Expense Budget.
In October?
That would be our only other chance. Or if we have a decision before June Town Meeting, we can make that change as well.
I just think it should be evaluated between now and when we go to June Town Meeting. Do you think that that's a real serious number? You're talking 2,000, over 2,000 hours of overtime, $83,000 in overtime. And when you look at that kind of number and you think about the type of staff you need to have placed to spend that much money, I just don't think we have the cycles to do that. But it's not my thing. I mean, I'm not in the Water Department, so I may be speaking a smidge out of school, but that's a pretty sizable number. So maybe we can just analyze it a little more between now and June Town Meeting.
I will just note though, that some of it, some of the overtime with, in regards to the water treatment plant, that dollar amount most likely will not change because those are required staffing hours for the water treatment plants. So I would only see that possibly the emergency overtime would be something that could change if we chose to evaluate and use contractors instead.
Okay, so I noticed now that you have about $7,000 for other water stuff, and that's about the only money you're talking about that could potentially move around. The other half will stay there. Okay, thank you.
A note about contracted services. We have reduced machinery maintenance to the fiscal year 2015 funding level at $66,500. I believe it was at $75,000 as initially requested. We've done some further evaluation of the Tree Care appropriation and have reduced that to $32,000 based on the average expenditure over the last three years. Stormwater remains unchanged, and as I reported to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee last evening, the new MS4 stormwater permit has been released and is under preliminary evaluation. We're trying to meet with our consultants early next week in advance of what we think is the final Capital Improvement Planning Meeting on Wednesday for any potential modifications that may take place. We would not modify the operating budget for stormwater. Note with regard to the streetlights. We've made an adjustment based on additional information from Redding Municipal Light Department, decreasing the request to $65,000. And this reflects the projected decrease in expense due to the LED streetlight project, which is ongoing. It factors a 9% electricity rate increase, which is also carried throughout utility costs in the Town Budget that our MLD has reported to us. And at that number, $65,000 includes the reactivation of streetlights that are currently shut off as LED streetlights. So based on the analysis we've received from our MLD, we have the ability to reactivate those shut-off lights as LEDs and end up in a scenario where the funding still is below, where the expense, even with the rate increases below, or we, well, not with the rate increase, but with the overall year-to-year expense, the overall comparison, the rate is low because of the savings associated with the LED.
I have a question. With respect to the timeline and, you know, is there some kind of schedule for replacing the lights? Obviously, it must be if you're reflecting the save.
So they've been doing it, whenever there's been a report of a light out and it needs to be repaired, my observation has been that they've been replacing it with an LED. They have done targeted areas with LED lights as well. They are awaiting an answer from the Town with regard to our intentions for reactivating those shut-off lights. That certainly is contingent upon the outcome of this budget deliberation. But if I recall, they indicated about a year ago that the timeline was about two years for completing that project. Again, just going from memory. Snow and ice, and we've carried it again at $175,000. I would note, I think everyone's familiar, there is a statutory requirement that we level fund that if we are going to have the ability to carry over a snow and ice deficit to the next fiscal year. So we're recommending it be held at $175,000 as it has been for, I believe, a number of years.
And the budget reflects holding $250,000?
The revenue plan it does, that's correct. In sanitation, collection costs were level funded according to the contract. We did see a slight tonnage decrease at disposal. Tipping fee did increase by $1, which resulted in a decrease of $2,250. That's not changed from the submission back in June.
Just to, just to give you more of a general question, when does our contract due?
I'd have to look back at my notes, but I believe it's two years from this June, I think.
Okay, it's two more years.
I think it's two. I need to confirm that.
Just wanna make sure that we, it's not now.
There's at least one, I know that.
Okay.
So a note about water, and I can't stress enough, we've put in here a preliminary projection with regard to the water rate. It is preliminary. We are gonna continue to review it ahead of the Board's public hearing on water rates. Again, as we noted, three positions would be carried in a Salary Contingency voted under the Enterprise Budget for a total of $146,239. Again, breaking news, we received notification today that the Town of Andover is transitioning to a tiered system. Those who would follow the deliberations in the intermunicipal agreement with Andover last year, that triggers an annual 5% increase, according to the contract, for the balance of the years in the intermunicipal agreement. The budget that was submitted in February, it was unknown. Andover was projecting a 10% increase on a flat rate at that point in time. With this change, we see a reduction in five percentage points in the, in the cost of water budget. The 5% allowance, excuse me, was the allowance that we were carrying for budget projection purposes when we were doing a workshop to model the water rate over the next 25 years. So it's come in at where we were projecting it would come in at. And there's a more detailed report that the Water Superintendent has provided. I haven't brought it for tonight's meeting, but I'll provide it to the Board and the Finance Committee ahead of a water rate hearing, which will be probably scheduled in May. Total expense increase in the whole budget, $24,612. An increase in indirect costs in the amount of $12,935. And again, I'll note here, the preliminary water rate recommendation from the Water Department was an increase of 6%, so that's less than what we were projecting last year at 7%. Would generate retained earnings in the amount of $265,590 that could be used for rate stabilization as MWR rate, the MWR rate project proceeds. That's something we're gonna continue to evaluate between now and the actual water rate hearing. We may modify that. It's certainly a substantial amount of retained earnings we'd be generating. We may not need to generate to that extent. But right now, the preliminary recommendation is a 6% rate increase. And really concludes the presentation I was going to offer this evening. Again, I know what's next, the conclusion of the ongoing investigations. The ongoing review by Mr. Moreland of the department's operations will continue. Any adjustments could be made prior to the April 25 budget review, which the Board will have to proceed with their overall reconciliation of the budget towards the available revenue. On the 9th, the public budget hearing is scheduled, June 6th, 2016, the Town Meeting. And in mid-July, we receive a report on the Department of Public Works that will include an evaluation and recommendations to be compiled by contract with the Acting Director.
Questions, Board, FinCom?
So just a piece of information, Mr. Chairman, the sanitation contract goes to June 30th, 2018.
Did you say 18?
18, June 30th, 2018.
Mr. Dan?
Mike and Liz, what are the, putting the Salary Pool money can go fund, helping some reserve there. Is there, we have a lot more flexibility there, you said, do we keep some accounting? Traceability of where the money came from, do we retain that purpose a little bit, but then still have some flexibility?
I can tell you that there is very detailed oversight of this, how we're doing part of the Finance Department, particularly the Finance Director and the Department of Public Works.
The Salary Pool is broken down by category. So, you know, whether it's cost of living adjustments broken out by each Union in Town or if, you know, the DPW positions, we actually broke it out by DPW positions and then step, DPW step increase, you know, decrease dollar savings and as well as the DPW overtime, so.
Thank you.
Andy, I'm the Toyota.
Mr. Chairman, I would just note again, there's a lot of information we've distributed here. We certainly understand people are gonna want time to digest it. I think that Mr. Moreland, Ms. Rourke, and I remain open to a continued discussion on this particular department's budget as it's warranted, and will provide any updates as they're available.
Well, I'd like to personally thank you for the presentation. I think we've healed enough to give the Board, I hope the Finance Committee, a general picture of how you're putting this together, getting situation oriented.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to recognize Liz in particular for her efforts in dissecting the budget and bringing Mr. Moreland up to speed. Mr. Moreland for his efforts and the input he's provided based on his experience of evaluation and his leadership of the department.
Yes, Michael.
Were you going to talk about town building budget at all, or are you planning on doing that one?
Certainly, we could have a discussion through that.
I think it would be great if you were here. I just want to first say, you're doing a great job. I think you've been in the job, what, less than a year, right?
Yeah, six, seven months, six months.
And I, and I'm not around a lot in all the buildings, but I've definitely seen improvement on how things operate, and I just think you're doing a fantastic job. I'm a big fan. With the recent incidents that are going on over the library in regards to the elevator, is there anything that we have to do differently in our budget to account for its age? Is that something that needs to be addressed in FY 17, or is that something that's gonna be at Town Meeting or not?
We're looking to address that as soon as possible. Ms. Knight has put an extensive amount of effort personally into trying to unangle the situation with the library elevator. And I believe it's been narrowed down to some sort of computer processing unit that needs to be replaced. Because we do not forecast the need to replace the entire elevator, but I believe Ms. Knight and Ms. Rourke are in the process of evaluating available town building funds to expedite addressing that matter. If we're not able to address that matter, then we may need to make a modification to the town building plan. It's very much high on the radar.
And then what is the big plan for FY 17 for this, I didn't quite grasp that from this budget.
For this, what?
For the Town Hall. For, you know, I've been griping at least four years, sitting in the seat, about the carpets. carpets, and, you know, just the little things in this town that we've been talking about, the seats, and just little things around town hall. And I know we've approved money, and then we don't see the stuff done, so I know that's not happening anymore going forward, but I didn't really notice much in the budget.
I think it's a fair question, and there was a sample on the funds approved for investment in this building. There is some property work to be done in the finance department that I believe purchase orders have been approved for, and through the work that was done to bring in house on-call contracting, we've got a work plan for addressing those issues. We have funding to address the access to the veterans' service office. It's something that we have held on in hopes of a positive outcome of the federal use substance grant, which we filed for a second year in a row. In the mix with the conversation is the overall use of the building. It may be that we find another location to locate the veteran's service office to. And then there is a substantial flooring project that I own, Ms. Knight has on the docket, I have to defer to her in terms of what she thinks the timing is.
The flooring project, I have to get a big specialist in to see if we need to rebate the floors. If we do not, we have to put it out to bed because it's over $25,000, but I'm going to go look into getting the entire finance going to the property, and that's happening in the next few weeks, I'm going to get that up and running. Already, I have the front door should be put in in the next few weeks, we've been waiting for the weather to change a little bit, we didn't want to pull it out with it being so cold, but it is ordered and in, we're just waiting for the weather to improve, and it will be 88 degrees, and it has the capability of adding the button. I looked into the price of the button, but it's $1,000 per button, so that's, I have the disability commission, I have their list of requests as well. The finance wall, we're going to tear that down, and that's already been approved, I'm working with an construction company planning it. She's going to get rid of her window, and it's going to go all the way out, and she'll have a ceiling rear door, and she gets privacy, so she can have a meeting without people jumping up and down in front of her window.
I refrain from saying what I said to Liz.
And as Mike says, room 10, we're still working on the logistics of how we want that room set up, where we want the exits, where we want the offices, how, you know, we want to make a meeting room, the hallway, and a waiting room for the veterans.
Great.
That's about it in this building. And I did put forth some for this coming year, some building controls as far as the boiler. I had it by stealth because I think it would push energy costs down, because I noticed with this, I've been handling the boiler all winter long, and you can see all or nothing.
Yeah.
It's on, and I walked through the building, the air conditioner is on, the heat's on, and the windows are off. So whatever we're doing is, on warmer days like today, I just shut the boiler off.
And in the winter, we go home frozen.
This room is the biggest challenge.
Some automated controls that, you know, it would gauge the outside temperature and turn the boiler on and off as needed.
That would be nice.
And another piece that it's going to be on the boiler is, if it shuts down, you know, say on a Friday afternoon, it's going to be 20 degrees all weekend. When that happens, I stop by the older buildings and check and make sure their boilers are working. This week, shoot me a text to my phone and say the boiler has shut down. It is an original building, which I think is 1964.
I think Michael was alluded to, we keep talking about it, fixing this room up a little bit. Between the chairs and this weird table arrangement and so on and so forth, and we've looked at, you know, creating a art type of table arrangement, which would be more appropriate. And I guess the cost has always been in the way. Or there's some other priorities obviously more important than the table we sit around, but sooner or later, we ought to fix it.
This is where a lot of the business gets done, and it just needs to become more user-friendly, the setup, and this is a lot challenging, especially the way we're positioned. It's very hard to have a conversation with another selectman on the other end of the table, because there's a couple of people blocking each other, and it's just, we're not complaining much, because money's tight, but if we're going to get to the areas, we've been talking about this for a long time, in this particular area, in this room, even the carpet and the seats, Mr. Toros has been sitting in this room for many years, and the same seat probably since today showed up, and the seats are pretty tired, we need to do the right thing.
It's on the list. We'll look into it.
Yeah. No, your list is good, I see the other priorities, and I think they're spot on. I think the finance area obviously needs it a lot. But as long as we're not forgotten, again, thank you for what you do. I'm good, all my stuff is good.
Okay, anyone else? Pincon, Joe? Oh, I thought you... Abby? No? Okay, thank you. And the rest of the crew, Liz?
I just wanted to let the person who I said to drop off an original budget to a revised budget comparison on the Bunnery Street.
Okay, great.
I do have one more, one Mr. Moylan's here. This thing that came out from MMA this week regarding stormwater, did you guys see that announcement? Is that going to have a negative effect on us?
Of course.
Financially? I don't know if that's something that can, you know...
Seriously, Michael, I think we need to have a conversation, talk about the water rates, about how we're going to deal with the cost of stormwater. A lot of communities have adopted a, some kind of a fee associated with the water rate cover. I don't know whether we want to do that, but I think we ought to have that discussion. And it would be a good time to do it, when we talk about the water rate.
Because, you know, our budget today, we have a $260,000 budget for stormwater, but I'm not sure what that really covers. Does it help us meet the new requirements that just were released by the EPA?
Probably not.
And we're in the middle of our budget time here, and now that's just being released, is there something we should look at after reconsidering this budget?
I could say that it's something that we'll be evaluating and meeting with a consultant next week, because the timing is everything. I defer to Mr. Moylan for his experience with this particular matter.
Thank you for the question, and my response would be that anytime you get a permit renewal from EPA, it's analogous to increased costs. So the new MS4 permit will have some additional requirements in it. We haven't reviewed the full impact of what's in there, and sometimes it is left to some degree to interpretation. Nonetheless, we know that we're going to have some additional costs going forward to comply with the MS4 permit. It's my understanding that the MS4 permit, however, does not kick in until July of '17, so it gives us some opportunity, some time, to understand the impact, what it means to the budget. Probably will give the town an opportunity to continue to evaluate the wisdom of adopting a stormwater fee, there are pros and cons. And that's where I'd kind of leave it with that. We have a meeting scheduled next week with the consultant who's been working with the town. Actually, it's scheduled for Tuesday morning to better understand where we stand with meeting the last permit, making sure we're in compliance with that permit, and getting us in a position so that we're going to be in compliance with the newly issued permit.
Thank you for that response, I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
I just would know one more person, Jackery Suddly, who's here from the administrative office of the Department of Public Works, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Mr. Jim?
Oh, Mr. Foye.
I just want to wait, I want to hold off until you guys finish the budget. I just want to thank Mr. Moylan, actually, for the effort he's given to the city, I mean, to the town. When the town administrator told me that Mr. Moylan would be joining on an interim basis anyway, I can't tell how fortunate we are that we have him here during this period, no matter how long or short it is. For those who don't know, Mr. Moylan's somewhat of a legend in the public works industry. And regardless of the fact that he's retired, he has more in his plate now probably than he did before with Masti OT and stuff like that, so, well, thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Joe. Ready to move on to the next subject?
So Victor Fox and DPW, Ryan Smith, we will not be taking action on hazard mitigation plan tonight, Michael, so it's early till the 25th, I'll catch up to you after.
It's hot like these, it's really hot.
Can't block it off.
And that was, you remember, all the air drainers, so it's all suited. Then it was a former, a chemical former, so when they come into the building on the edge of the...
Abby?
Dawn?
Received your checks, thank you.
As you're different, so the kids can bring a robe on, and they're not scalded on the floor, you have to put it in on the dog.
Sorry, now the...
But this is directly relevant.
School, right? Yeah. We'll have the exact numbers shortly.
Have a good day, Stacy, huh?
We don't have those, I don't have the detailed numbers on the spreadsheet yet, but as soon as I do.
All right, okay, I'm going to be pinching for...
Oh, you'll be at the meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
I was just going to tell you that Doran Whittier just did it.
He never brought anything to you?
He doesn't have any invoices, the only invoice at that meeting was that $1,200, the lead thing. The rest of them weren't invoices, they were just churning up the subsections of Doran Whittier's.
Michael said that Doran Whittier had, before we get going, just a quick question, at the secondary school building committee, didn't you tell me Doran Whittier had a couple hundred thousand dollars in their true-up of invoices?
There was, I think there were invoices, were there? I thought there was a couple of small ones.
There was that little one, that $12 one.
But there was an overall reconciliation.
Good, we went to the bar. We went to the bar because we thought it was over. And then we all ran back into the stadium, it was crazy.
All right, we ready to resume our meeting? Approve the, let's see, you didn't skip any, right?
Yep, we just have the two...
Approve the health insurance mitigation agreement?
Which one?
Yes, Mr., did you ask for a motion?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm asking for a motion, yes.
The health mitigation.
Well, before you do that, I would like to recuse myself.
I think all you have to do is just say...
You don't need to, just, when we vote, right?
Well, not vote, but...
Not vote, just say that you recuse yourself for standing. Mr. Mayor Billy?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the health insurance mitigation agreement dated March 31st, 2016.
We have seconds, Mr. Priscilla. Are there any further discussion? Just as a general comment, in the process of working with our employee health insurance group to come up with a change to the health insurance plan, such that we brought our initial percentage increase from somewhere in the area of 11 to 12 percent? 14 percent. 14 percent, down to a little over... Seven. Seven. And so we're just approving a document that basically we have a handshake on, we're moving forward with the 7% savings. On the motion, all in favor?
Aye. Have I accused myself?
Mr. Yule accuses himself because he has a family member that's part of, I gather, part of...
Employee of the...
Employee. While we're doing that, Mr. Gilgurdo, would you like to comment on the adoption of the 216 Hazard mitigation plan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would request and recommend that we reschedule that vote until the evening of April 25th.
That's your recommendation?
Correct.
So we are going to schedule the week of 25th?
Monday, April 25th. We will fit it into what will surely be a lengthy agenda.
Do you have any old and new business, do you have anything to report?
I do not, no.
Any member, even though it's not on the agenda, that'll entertain a motion?
No, I want to just say one thing.
Oh, okay.
Just a great job on the all-town chorus. We got to see a Beatles, Beatles concert, Beatles chorus, they had all three huge crews from all three grammar schools, a huge group from the middle school, notorious from the high, not notorious from the high school. It was excellent, so congratulations to the entire North Reading music staff, Ms. Lister and all of the, all of us, it was excellent.
Anything else? Before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Slow down on Central Street, please, people, that's my only other comment.
I'll report that too.
You know, Michael, that brings up a question that I had, on Orchard Drive, they had put up one of those speed signs, I know the sign had damaged or was defective or something, it's been taken down. Is it taken down permanently, or is the plan to put it back? Based on what Catherine is saying, maybe we need one up on...
We have a request in FY '17's budget for additional units.
The chief presented to us a budget hearing that Saturday, that he has multiple ones programmed into, and one of them most likely would be placed on Central Street.
Just people are on bikes, kids and parents, and other people are biking, and be careful.
Oh, we knew that was going to happen once we paved the road.
I'm not sure we can get an update on the broken one, though. Is that covered under warranty?
I believe the police department is pursuing a warranty coverage, I did not hear whether or not it was covered in that way or not. But I will certainly follow up with the chief with regard to the status and relay the concern regarding Central Street.
It's a great reminder as you drive down that road.
It's almost everywhere, today I was coming up Route 28, and the gentleman in the car on the lane beside me was, kept crossing over the lane in front of me because whatever he was reading on his phone was more important than paying attention to the...
Did you arrest him?
Did I arrest him? Of course not. I think you probably would have read about that in the paper.
That would be great.
But nevertheless, whatever you're doing isn't as important as paying attention, you know?
Well, the gentleman that took the camera out, he was, now he was distracted.
Today, I was coming up Route 28, and the gentleman in the car on the lane beside me was kept crossing over the lane in front of me because whatever he was reading on his phone was more important than paying attention to the...
Did you arrest him?
Did I arrest him? Of course not. I think you probably would have read about that in the paper.
Wouldn't be great.
But nevertheless, whatever you're doing isn't as important as paying attention, you know?
Well, the gentleman that took the camera out, he was, now he was distracted.
That's true, yes, yeah.
Distracted driver. Okay, again, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you.
Liz, thank you for everything. Good night.